And your fax machine, right? All right. Welcome to the regular meeting, November 4, 2025, Long Island City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Bridge.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor James Mosby.
Present. Please stand and join me in invocation of Pastor Travis Calderia. And the pleasure to follow that.
Let's pray. God, we come to you on an ordinary evening. The night when kids are playing sports and doing homework, families are cooking and eating together, and doctors and nurses are caring for patients, and police officers are protecting our streets. You are present in all of these things and more. You created this world, and you're at work all around us. You are present in our ordinary daily lives, and you are present in the extraordinary events that we encounter. And tonight, we recognize that you are present here, in this room, and among the people gathered here. Thank you, Lord, for caring for us. We are grateful that you care for people like firefighters, and teachers, and parents, and grandparents, and neighbors, and strangers. And we're grateful that you care for cities and communities. Thank you for caring for Lompoc and for the city council meeting tonight. God, we ask that you please guide and lead us. We can want this, we want this community to grow and to thrive. And we want families to have homes, and workers to have jobs, and people to feel safe. So please help us and provide for us and teach us. We confess, Lord, that while we try our best, it's possible to both be well-intentioned and misguided. So please correct us when we're wrong and help us to learn what's right. In a culture that often seems so divided, would you give us the eyes to see each other and ears to hear each other and minds to understand each other? Help us to work together to serve and strengthen this city. We pray especially for our leaders, for our mayor, and for our city councillors, police and fire chiefs, principals and superintendents, pastors and clergy. We pray for those who devote themselves and so much of their time and energy to our community. Please protect and direct and guide and refresh them, and may they be examples of love and grace, humility and charity, integrity and courage. We pray for schools and churches, businesses and charities that make up our community. Please unite and guide us. On an election day, we pray for your will to be done in California and across the country. Please put the right people in the right places, enable good laws to pass and bad laws to fail. Make this country a better reflection of yourself giving love. As the federal shutdown lengthens, more and more people in our city are affected, and we pray for families that have missed paychecks and meals. Please help us to support and care for them. We pray for a solution that can be found in Washington and that you'll break down the partisan walls that have divided so much of our country and hurt so many people. God, we pray for big things and small things tonight, knowing that you care for all of them because you love us. So may that love fill us and transform us, and may that love saturate this room today and guide all that we do for the future. Amen.
Let's try me to pledge. Ready? Again.
For the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager report. Thank you, Mayor. I want to make sure everybody was aware of the annual caregivers information session that will be at the Dick Dewey Center this Thursday. They'll be having a dinner raffle, and caregivers can connect with community resources. The session will begin at 5:30. Registration can be completed online. Also wanted to let members know that Parks and Rec on Saturday, December 6, will have the annual breakfast with Santa. We're going to have pancakes and sausage. Starts at 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM at the Dick Dewey Center. Pre-registration is required. It's $10 for kids between 3 and 12, and $12 for 13 and up. I want to remind everybody that December 5, we'll be having our Christmas parade. I encourage everybody to come and out. It's a great event. You need to register if you're going to bring a float by November 17, and this year's theme is A Home Town Christmas. Pleased to share that the library will be sponsoring or hosting a tiny art show. Residents are encouraged to get their free canvas at either library. They can return them to the libraries by November 26, and they'll be on display at the Grossman Gallery during December. Did I miss something? Yeah, there you go. I'm pretty proud of this one right here. This has been a long journey of getting these awards from the GFOA. It started, I started it myself, actually, in 2012. I worked tirelessly to get the Act for Award. And I'm super proud of the Finance Management Finance Division for actually getting this for eight years in a row since then. But I'm super proud of them this year because they actually got the award for their budget presentation for the '25-'27. I know I started that, but I didn't get very far, and they sure did a lot of work to get that done, and I'm super proud of their efforts there. I also want to let everyone know that Conservation will be kicking off the Holiday Light Exchange Program. You can get five old strands and get LED replacements. When you come in, just make sure you have a lump of utility bill and a photo ID, and obviously the old lights. Also, there's an opportunity, if you're going to get a fridge this season, that if you buy an Energy Star, you can get a $75 rebate. You can also get $75 for disposals, so you get up to $150. I wanted to highlight some of the improvements that we've been done at the Police Department. I know we secured some Homeland Security funds, and we were able to put a perimeter fence around there. We also had some other funds that were able to get pavement, so I'm pretty excited about seeing improvements over there. And finally, I wanted to remind everybody that November 11 will be Veterans Day. City Hall, library, park, indoor facilities will be closed, and also solid waste pickup will be delayed one day. And I also wanted to thank the many veterans throughout this community that helped serve. Appreciate them. Thank you. That's all I have.
Did the police chief talk to you about something? No? Not going to do it? I mean, fire chief, I'm sorry.
We can do it next time.
All right, next time. All right. I got a couple of questions for you, and thank you for solving a problem. And the people say the city hall doesn't work for them. I know it was brought to my attention that somebody was being charged with an impact fee, and they're in that gray zone of permit filing, and we redirected stuff, so appreciate you stepping up. And it was the Little Caesars was getting a significant impact fee. So kudos, and thank you guys for working and getting that straightened out. But if I could ask you, it's somewhere, because I did notice that the appeals process is kind of not being posted or identified to the people. Maybe you could put something up there that they can see this, our appeal section, so we recognize that? If you could get that available.
And if you hear of any other impact fee, people that got stuck in that crack, let us know. We'll look at, we'll look it over.
Good. So if anybody knows that something like that's happened, and make sure that, find the city manager, or Mario, yeah. Mario is the community development director as well, to get that. But good job, guys. I appreciate that. I know the customer got that, was smiling ear to ear. Anybody else see any other questions for the city manager? Get up easy tonight. All right. Consent calendar. We got a lot of stuff on consent calendar, so take public comment on consent calendar. Anybody want to pull anything off consent calendar? Yes?
Before we take any public comment on consent calendar, I did need to announce that council members, Starbuck, due to a real property conflict of interest with the OTC Zone and the MU Zone, has a conflict of interest on item number three. He does not need to leave the room because it's on the consent calendar. And Mayor Mosby, due to a real property conflict of interest with the MU Zone, has a conflict on ordinance number 1731 within item number three. You also don't need to leave the room for that, but they've been stated on the record, so you will be recused from those when you vote.
Okay. So let me read in items that are coming up on consent calendar. We have approval minutes of four council meeting, August 5, 2025, August 19, 2025, September 2, 2025, and September 16, 2025. And approval and ratification of expenditures, payroll, $2 million and change for October 10. And two voucher registers, one for October 3, of 1.28 million, and a voucher register August 6 through 10, for 6.454 million. Spending some money. Number three is adoption of ordinance number 1731, Princey 25 and 1732, Princey 25, admitting the zoning code text for implementation into housing element programs associated with six-cycle general plan housing element. Number four is the adoption of ordinance number 1736, Princey 25, prohibiting the parking of any vehicle for more than two hours without a permit in any residential preferential parking district, and establishing a residential preferential parking district on the 1,200 to 1,300 block of North El Street. Number five is adoption of 1737, Princey 25, establishing minimum distance that vehicles must be moved to avoid violation of immunity code 1028190, 72-hour parking, and to authorize removal of vehicle in violation and adoption of ordinance 173825, removing the need for an available shelter space or safe parking space ordered in force, Chapter 10.30. Number six, approval agreement with Matthew Miller to terminate his existing lease agreement at the Lompoc Airport due to the sale of the hangar to Adam Clark. Approval lease agreement with Adam Clark at Lompoc Airport. Number seven is adoption of resolution 6785, Princey 25, establishing job class numbers and solid ranges for water regulatory compliance specialists, RCSs, trainee and water RCS 1 position, admitting the city classification compensation pay plans, and accepting and adopting amended IBW 1245 tender agreement. Number eight is award of invitation to bid number 3104 to Embrace Minerals Filtration Incorporated to purchase diet to mission service amount of $548,000 and 100. Authorize the city manager to execute purchase agreement with Embrace, and authorize the purchase of materials managed to issue the PO. Number nine, approve and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Workers' Compensation Administration LLC for administration of the city workers' compensation program. Number 10, Johns Manville Park restroom and concession building replacement and site work change order approvals for Precon Industries Incorporated in the total amount of $89,405.06. Authorize the community development director to execute change order. Number 11 is award of contract purchase order in a total amount of $473,930.24 to National Auto Fleet Group for purchase of seven new unused 2026 Ford F-150 Lightning W1B Pro four-wheel drive Super Group, five-and-a-half-foot box, 145-inch WB pickup trucks to replace fleet vehicles assigned to the water parks, urban forestry, transit departments. And those are the 11 items. Anybody wants to pull any of these items? Okay, I'm actually wanting, I've got questions greater than small ones to pull out of number 10 and 11. Any items that are pulled by council will be addressed immediately before second oral communications near the end of the meeting. So I'm looking for somebody with a motion with the amendments as per the city attorney for the other nine items.
I'd like a correction or an addition to the minutes.
Okay.
From August 19 of 2025, in section eight, the Bajer Meadows project status. I would like it to reflect that both the staff and the staff of the city and the staff of the developer both stated they agreed that there would be one EIR for the development and for the annexation. I'll make a motion that the consent calendar is approved, less the two items that have been pulled, which will be displayed at the end of the meeting.
Plus with the city attorney's recusals on 1731 and Dirks on the OTC conflict. Stated by the city attorney, correct?
Yes, stated by the city attorney.
Okay, we got a first, you may got a second. Anybody got a TV monitor that's working somewhere? Motion by Bridge, a second by Ball. Go ahead and look. Is that easy to spend? $9 million? Authorize the spending, approve, recognize whatever of $9 million. I pass it 5-0. Okay, we'll open up to oral communications. Your time to speak about what's going on in the city. Three minutes. See when no one writes? Maybe during this time, city attorney could just fill us in real fast what we're looking at doing down the road with Zoom meetings. Are there some new rules coming down the pipe?
Sure. Yes, Mayor, the state legislature just adopted a new bill, SB 707, I believe is what it is. And the governor signed it that will require, among many other things, on July 1, 2026, the city council must begin having either Zoom or two-way telephone participation for the public at our city council meetings. And when I say Zoom, it can be Zoom or Teams or any of the video services like that. So we will need to, by then, get the system hooked up and available to have Zoom participation or two-way telephone participation with the public.
Okay. Are you good? Well, see, nobody writes for oral communication. We'll close oral communications.
I just, I have a quick question about that. Does that mean it has to be real time? No delay?
I don't, I think you can deal with a delay if we are willing to sit here and wait for the delay so that it's possible for people to participate. Of course, that's not convenient. Be a lot better to have no delay.
Okay, you're all right. Let me, so let's go to a staff presentation. Now, I'm going to request a presentation by the Finance Department on the feasibility of development impact fee refunds.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public, city staff. So I've got a quick report, I believe, on the feasibility. And you know, the minute I say that, you know you're in trouble. Feasibility of refunds on previously received developer impact fees. It's a lot of words to basically say, can we refund developer impact fees that had been issued a certificate of occupancy in the past two years, and the fees have been collected? And so... So developer impact fees have historically been charged and collected by the city on various development types. Those fees are due on issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Prior to August of 2025, that fee schedule included impact fees for these 12 different development types. And all of them are listed on the, on the screen here, and includes things like parks and rec and library, and public safety, streets, traffic, bikeways, water, wastewater, and solid waste containers, refuse containers. Effective August 5, 2025, the fee schedule was dialed back by quite a bit, and now includes the impact fees for these four options, the library, police and fire, and refuse containers. And so as we were going through the process of the ordinance for this, on May 6, at the city council meeting, council requested that we do this report and investigate the feasibility of being able to refund what are now canceled developer impact fees, but that had been issued a certificate of occupancy and had been collected during the prior two years. Now, as a note, the ones that had not been issued a certificate of occupancy, is this is an example of what Mayor Mosby, you were talking about earlier, about the Little Caesars, that they had not been issued a certificate of occupancy, however, they had been, there had been fees that had been assessed for them. We had not yet collected them in that case. And so for those that had either been collected or not been collected, but had not had a certificate of occupancy, those are no longer due. And so those are either not being collected or will be refunded. And I say will be because as of now, we are not, we have not been able to identify any that had, had put in, had actually paid, and not been issued a certificate of occupancy. Okay. You know, I'm about the data, and so I, in doing this analysis, pulled some numbers. This is the reviewing of the revenues that have been received and expenses distributed during the past four fiscal years. The fees that are listed in this first column just include the parks and rec, streets, traffic, all of the fees that have been suspended and are not water or wastewater. That's what's reported in the fees collected line. The expenses related to those are in the next, the next category, and those are what has been spent during those fiscal years. The water and wastewater are separated because they are expenses related specifically to debt payments. And the DIF-related debt expenses, those are, those are the debt payments that we have that are related to those. I did count through the, went through the, our software and looked at all of the lines of what made up those fees collected, and in '23-'24, there were three developers that paid developer impact fees, and in '24-'25, there were two. So really, it, there's a couple of questions and considerations that need to be made as we're looking at this question is, is it, is it legal? And is the complexity of calculating it? If it is, what is that complexity? And so a couple of steps that I just noted, that all prior fees that had been established, had been established, they were approved and they were equitably charged each year until August 5, 2025. Fees were then eliminated or changed per the change in the ordinance, and that ordinance was first submitted in May, and then it was made effective in August. The biggest concern here is if we refund legally established fees, it could be argued that the city is providing a gift of public funds. And by issuing refunds of those that, on those appropriately collected fees that had a due date that had already passed. And so it is difficult to determine a public purpose of returning fees that were already due and paid before the ordinance was changed. And so there are additional questions to ask about what, how do we assign the funds? What has been spent? What hasn't been spent? But I think that it really comes down to the question of whether or not we are able to, whether or not it's going to be perceived as a gift of, of public funds. And that is my presentation.
I've got a question for the city attorney. There's a couple of these impact fees, going back and studying some of them. Some of the baselines, I think, they were using, especially if like the street impact fee, were not necessarily the baseline of the established occupancy. It may have been the most recent one, but not one where the building was. So somebody paid an impact fee, so they had already some credit that wasn't getting established. But what I'm finding curious is, is that, and as I mentioned earlier, about noticing the people that they have the ability to appeal. And at what point do we trigger that people would have the ability to come to the council to appeal? A lot of people at that time, they're desperate to open, and they're writing a check, borrowing money, whatever, or they're passing it on to somebody else. So if somebody wasn't noticed two or three years ago, they had the ability to appeal to the council, do they have the ability to appeal to council still?
Not if they were given their fees, their fee invoice, or told that they were required to pay two or three years ago. That would be a passage of too much time in order to appeal from that. But what our code says is that whenever a decision is made by city staff that is appealable, the applicant must be informed that they have the right to appeal and what the appeal process is.
Okay, so, but if they don't, if they were never noticed that, that's, doesn't matter then? If they were not noticed that they were, had the right to appeal? Because I remember when we went through the whole appeal component, we wanted it on the documents so people knew they had the right to come before the elected body. And I'll give you an example. So an example was the old Victory Outreach Building, and I don't know what ended up being finalized, but with a group that took it over, they were being charged as a baseline for street impact fees as a Victory Outreach. We all know, we've been here for a little while, that who the original builder was of that, and they had 350 employees. So the baseline was using somebody who was really not the baseline. But the person who took it over, they didn't really dig out into it. They just, I think they paid over a quarter million dollars a street impact fee on that one. But the developer before had already paid this street impact fee. So I mean, that's the complexity of it, that it wasn't happening in processing, as was Little Caesars. They were being assessed for AAA. But we know who was in there before AAA is Blockbuster Video. So which was their baseline? Blockbuster Video or AAA? So I mean, it comes to a component when these things, but a lot of these people didn't even understand that they have the ability to come to the council and appeal, and they just think they're at the end of the road. So I don't know if there's a leniency aspect that's allowed there or not.
Well, those would be issues that would get worked out in any appeal. And with the Victory Outreach, I don't know if our ordinance that required us to give notice of the appeal was in place at that time or if it was not. But even if it was, if it was three, two, three years ago, there's a period of time that's like a statute of limitations, that after a certain period of time, you cannot complain anymore that you weren't given notice of the right to appeal. I don't specifically know what it is in this instance, but if it's two or three years ago, it has probably passed.
Okay. And that's my concern. I guess that's why the Supreme Court modified their understanding of impact fees needing drilled down to a direct nexus and be a little more scrutiny than what was happening as well. And you've mentioned some items that money went to go pay back debts, but that debt's already being covered with the increase of rates. So we actually are covering our impact fee at wastewater plant with the rates, or covering our bond debt. The rate payers are paying that already. So that was one of the reasons why we were able to retract that component, because it's already being covered. All right, Councilmember Bridge.
So based on what I'm hearing in this last conversation, there was some deficiency in the notice of the ability to appeal to some of the folks that submitted? Is that the tendency, tendency of what I'm hearing?
That's what the mayor is saying. I'm not aware of the facts of those situations.
Okay. Well, if that's true, when a citizen came here to the council and appealed to us for leniency or for forgiveness, or whatever the right phrase is, would that constitute them instituting an appeal?
I'm sorry, would it constitute a what?
Them instituting an appeal. Because what, what I'm hearing is, well, we didn't really, we weren't really crisp in telling folks they could appeal. The folks put in the development, they want to get their permit approved and everything, so they're not going to fight too much. But then they come and stand in front of the council and say, this is not fair, it's not right. Does that constitute an appeal?
No, because that appeal would be late, so it would not be an official techni- No, because that appeal would be late, so it would not be an official technical appeal. However, if some person feels that they have a claim against the city, that the city owes them money, they can always file a claim, a government tour claim with the city, and then we'll process that in the normal course, which can end up before the city council.
Does the appeal timing start at the payment of the fee, or when the developers told that this is going to be their assessment?
The appeal timing is, begins when the developer, it's whenever the city decision is made. So, when the city decision is made for the fees, I assume would be when the fees are calculated and the developer is told what amount they owe.
Can someone tell me whether that's at the start of the process, or at the end of the process?
I would have to defer to...
So, what I noticed before is they were noticed in April of the fee and were required to pay till, as they go into the condition of occupancy. So, they were giving you this much, and then came to the condition of occupancy and say, "Hey, you got to pay up." That's when somebody found me and go, "Hey, what's going on?"
Well, that's a, it's a very awkward process, because you're in the middle of a development when you've spent thousands of dollars to get to this spot, and if you fight it before you have your permit, if you appeal it before you have your permit, now your project's going to stop, we're going to go through a big process along, you know, nothing moves fast in our city. So, that, that seems inappropriate to me. I would think it would be, at worst, when you pay, but it seems to me like it should be within six months of payment, or something like that. But I still feel like we had a citizen who was assessed stuff for like parks and for putting housing in, new housing, they came in front of the council and said, "This is not fair." And they left with the assumed belief, we were going to think about what they had brought to us, but our solution now is, well, they didn't do it in a timely fashion, and we don't know if it's a gift to them, and all of this just seems really unfair to me. I'm not sure what the path's out of this is, unless we just take the risk and say, "We're going to assess all the ones." Can we legally give an extension of the appeal process?
I'm not sure that what we're really talking about here is the appeal process. This is, this question is whether we want to refund fees that have been paid, development impact fees that have been paid over the last two years, whether they were validly assessed or not. So, appeal is kind of not relevant. Whether they were validly assessed or not is not relevant, it's just, are we going to refund them all, even if they're valid, or not?
Okay, but my question is, could we, does this body allow an extension of an appeal process?
No, you cannot, because the appeal deadline is set by our ordinance, by our code. The way that you can, the way that you can do what you're trying to do is if an applicant or a member of the public were to file a claim, because they believe that the city owes them money, then we will process the claim in the normal process, and that claim can be settled, if the city desires to settle, in exchange for that person not suing the city.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay. This is number 12, review of overnight recreational vehicle parking ordinance, Lompoc Municipal Code, section 1028, 240, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. This item is a council request made by Councilmember Vega at the last meeting to bring back our ordinance that bans the overnight parking of recreational vehicles on all streets within the city of Lompoc. So, we have an ordinance that does just that, bans the parking of RVs on all city streets between the hours of 10:00 PM on one day and 6:00 AM on the next day, unless that RV is owned by a person that has an RV parking permit. We allow city residents to obtain RV parking permits for a permit fee. Those permits last for two years. It allows residents to park their RV on the street that they, or on the block that they live on, within 100 feet of the property line of their residence. And there are also guest parking permits that allow residents to obtain a parking permit for their guests who may be coming to visit in an RV. Those permits last for a period of two weeks. And that is a summation of the ordinance. The council wanted to bring this back for discussion and possible direction, so I am available for questions and also available to take any direction that the city council may want to give on this ordinance.
Councilmember Vega.
So, Jeff, I think the 72-hour parking ordinance required them just to move a few inches, and I'm not sure that we solidified the distance that had to be moved. That vehicle needs to be moved within the 72-hour timeframe. Maybe you could refresh me and tell me if I'm being redundant here, if that's something we're deciding tonight.
Yes. That was also at the last meeting. The city council adopted an ordinance that requires someone to move their vehicle at least 150 feet in a 72-hour period in order to avoid being towed.
Okay, the other, it's a two-part question here, so thank you so much. That ordinance has been adopted, that it's 150 feet from where they were parked, instead of a few inches each time, which is kind of frustrating for anybody in law enforcement and the homeowners. The other part that I'd like to suggest too, is, and bring up, is the permit process, the parking permit process. It seems to me that it's been brought up, that they're part of the 72-hour parking ordinance, and I believe that the people that purchased a permit expected to be, weren't part of this, yeah, weren't part of that 72-hour parking violation section. And I personally would like to, the council, to review this, for people that have RVs and have done it, everything correctly and have pulled a permit, are they okay parking their permit in front of their house? Because I believe the understanding was that it was okay for them to park in front of their residence, if it was a permit that was assigned to their residence, or within 100 feet, or unless, as long as there wasn't any complaints, which was complaint-based, but apparently we missed part of it, which meant that it was part of the 72-hour parking ordinance, which means there's really not a lot of benefit for people paying for a permit. So, anyway, I'd like us to talk about that. I think that the people that purchased a permit, they should be given a little more leeway than just a normal person parking their vehicle on the street, moving a few inches each time. There's a lot of people that would argue that said, "Hey, they're going to use it as a way to park their vehicles and take it out of storage," but, you know, there's a legality to this. Why make a permit and tell them it's okay if it's not okay? I think that's kind of a disservice to the people that would actually come over here and pay 50, 50-plus dollars for a two-year permit.
So, what I, if I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Vega, you are proposing that if someone has an RV parking permit, that the 72-hour rule basically would not apply to them? We would exempt people with RV parking permits from that 72-hour rule?
Yes.
Okay. If the council wants to do that, then I can take that direction. I can look into the legality of doing that exemption and bring back an ordinance to do that.
Yeah, and I think part of it, what we do is, we have a guest permit process, okay? Even though we say, "Hey, no one can be in their RV at night," or whatever, but I'm sure the guest permit process, I think if someone was to come visiting in town in their RV somewhere, you know, there are going to be some people that are sleeping in their RV, I'm sure, okay? Let's not just put a hood over, or something over our head and pretend that's not going to be happening, but they also have a process, they can get a permit also for that. I believe it's a couple of weeks, or something like that.
Two weeks.
So, yes, I'd like to make that proposal to the council, that we remove that from our 72-hour parking ordinance, and have the attorney revisit and see what's legal about how we can do this, so the people that are paying for a permit aren't being taken for So, I'm not sure exactly how we do that. Do I make a motion or a request?
Yeah, we've got to take public comment and all that other stuff, yeah.
Can I make a motion now, or do we have to take public comment?
You have to take public comment.
I have a quick question.
Councilmember Ridge.
Could you just help me understand, what is the permit for? Because now he's, I'm a little bit confused.
Okay.
What's the perk for getting a permit?
Well, we have a rule that says an RV cannot be parked on a city street overnight, between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. None of them can be parked there. So, the permit is to allow you to park on the street overnight. If you have a permit, then you can do it, and you won't be in violation of the ordinance. But even if you have a permit, it's, there is a part of the ordinance that says you still have to comply with all the other parking rules. And one of the other parking rules is the 72-hour rule. So, even if you have a permit, you still got to be moving your RV every 72 hours in order to avoid being towed under that other rule.
So, it essentially allows you to park your RV overnight, but you still have to move it?
Three days.
Every three days, yes.
Okay.
Mayor, Chief Morn. I would caution the council, I'm not sure, and this would be a city attorney and his researches, is that you can absolutely, as a council, make those changes to the municipal code, but the 72-hour law is a California vehicle code, which I don't believe we have the authority to alter. So, just want you to be cautious of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, I just want to kind of piggyback, you know, I agree with you in a lot of ways, there's just been a lot of confusion. I think a lot of people assume when they got the permit, that just means that they have permission to park their vehicle for as long as they want, as long as it's close to their house. So, any way that we can kind of clarify that. I did hear some people saying, "Oh, well, I don't have to store my vehicle at a storage facility, I just park it, you know, in front of my house." And I know that's created some issues for a few of the neighbors, so, again, any clarity, I think would be helpful there. I just kind of want to play this forward, because a lot of, you know, a lot of this has to do with enforcement and staying on top of stuff, and just want to play this forward. Some of the regulations talk about, you know, "Hey, make sure somebody's not, you know, plugging into the house," right? Some of the basic things, don't use the electric cord, and that's illegal in our city. So, maybe just asking the police chief, how are people going to, how are we going to facilitate people reporting these things? One of my fears is that, you know, dispatch lights up every other day with tons of people calling and saying, "I saw an extension cord." So, how are we playing some of these, how are we staying on top of this, and is there appropriate process? And I guess my follow-up would be, is the app an appropriate use for some of this enforcement and reporting?
Yeah, Councilmember Ball, I think that is the best route for anybody that sees that, because they can take a picture of it, get the license plate, and give us a location.
Get to your microphone.
They could get the license plate, take a picture of it in the photo, and the location, and share it with the police department. It goes to the dispatchers, they generate the call, and they'll send a CSO out to address that issue. We're obviously still available by telephone. If somebody doesn't have the app and they want to make that phone call, they absolutely can, but that's, the app would be one of the best ways to do it.
Yeah, I just wanted to get that out there, because I, some people might email some of us and say, "Hey, I have an issue, and it's my neighbor across the street, and I'm not sure what to do." But, again, thank you, we do have some means where people can report things appropriately and have someone help them with that issue. Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
You know, Jeff, aside from having a part of the vehicle code, we have other vehicles all over the city, which gives the police probable cause whenever they want to move a vehicle if it's sitting there. So, aside from that, being charged a permit just because the overnight part of it is, it seems like it's a little bit of a, if you could look into that to see how we could bypass that. If we're going to charge money for a permission slip, it seems like we should figure out, if we don't want them to be there forever, I get it, but it seems like it's, because it's part of the vehicle code, we should be able to amend something.
Yes. Looking at potential conflicts with the state law, vehicle code, is definitely going to be part of what I look into.
Because, you know, the idea of charging for something that's really misinterpreted, you know, is great, gives people a sense of, "Oh, we're doing the right thing," and then we've heard people are getting ticketed because they didn't see the sticker. We had that at public comment the last time. So, there's something there that's missing in this ordinance, as far as posting notice, or even the fact that, what is the legality of all this? You know, I know there's people here that don't want to give them any leeway, but, you know, when you charge for something, they should get something in return. So, thank you, if you could check into that, that'd be great.
So, with our code as written, you have 100-foot limit, or with the new one that we just, new ordinance we just passed, you're making it very difficult for them to get along. So, we probably need to look at that as a, make that 150-foot.
Yeah, I think that's a very good suggestion. With 100 feet on either side of your house, that you're allowed to park your RV with your permit, if you have to move it 150 feet in 72 hours, it only gives you a little 50-foot window for you to move your vehicle. So, it's unintended conflict or discrepancy that we have there, that I will also look into figuring out how it's best to fix that.
Anybody else have questions before I open up to public comment? Any other questions? Let me open this up to public comment. Thank you, Jeff. Here we go. They're lining up.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So, this is an issue that plagues our city. What is the distance from street corners that RVs have to be parked? Because I know of one place, Maple and O, where somebody making the turn from O Street onto Maple, they, there is an RV parked right there, right there, almost at the corner. So, if there's another car that's coming down Maple, how are they going to make their turn? Because these RVs, they take up space. How is this going to be enforced? Is it going to be complaint-driven? Or are we going to have officers, code enforcement officers, or whatever have you, go around tagging tires? So, another thing, how are we going to deal with the people who are living on the streets in these RVs? Where are we going to tell them to go? Do we actually have a functioning, safe parking system here in Lompoc? Do we actually, can we actually sustain self, or safe parking in Lompoc with porta-potties and electrical outlets to, you know, so that people can plug in their generators, or whatever have you? This is a very complex issue that honestly, there needs to be more discussion about. And I believe I heard the city attorney say something about 10:00 PM Monday through 6:00 AM Wednesday, at the beginning of his presentation. What's the significance of that timeframe, is my question? Because that seems quite random. But we do need to get the RV parking under control. Certain neighborhoods are plagued by it. Certain neighborhoods are plagued by it. There's a lot of traffic going back and forth at these RVs. I believe items three and four were dealing with this thing exactly, so how is this going to be enforced? Who's gonna enforce it? And what will be the penalties?
Hello, good evening. Just in listening to, um, these items, there was some ambiguity that came across, because I remember being at the meeting that you guys went and did that approval of like, yeah, okay, people can park their RVs and recreational vehicles for a two-year period, and they just have to pay a fee, um, but I don't, at that, at that specific meeting, and I don't recall anything being mentioned that, oh, by the way, they do have to move their vehicle every seventy-two hours, but that, that's being brought up tonight. Also, just, um, it, it, it seems like, um, it would be a really good idea and resolve a lot of the, um, issues with people that might be doing questionable activities in their RVs, and it, and that might, that, to have specifically like a, a safe area that people can go and go there and just park their RVs, that way that, with some modicum of, um, maybe not total surveillance, but some modicum of like a check-in area, or there's some kind of over-watchful eye that's maintained over the course of that time that, that they're parked there, so that would at least, if someone is in that position of like live, having to live in their vehicle, they could have that safe haven, or if, um, it was like, well, there's actually something nefarious or drug, druggie, or whatever's going on, that, then they, that could be resolved and just eradicated and dealt with at that time. So, um, it just seems, um, very ambiguous, also just the way that, um, on five, it reads very ambiguously, I guess. I know you guys were like, oh, we just voted this in, but establishing a minimum distance that vehicles must be moved to avoid violation of Lompoc Municipal Code, et cetera, and to authorize da-da-da, et cetera. Um, or to, you know, so it just, it was somewhat ambiguous, because it doesn't mention RVs specifically, but then, but then you've got the separate RV ordinance, but, um, anyway, just, it just seems like a good idea to have an area where everybody that has an RV, or maybe people that don't even live in their RVs, you could just establish a, a, a parking area that people can just go and park and pay some kind of city fee and have their vehicles in a safe area, and not have to worry about moving them a few inches or a few feet, and they can just pay the city a fee and have their vehicles parked there, so, thank you.
Hello, Carl Jones. My concern with RVs is mainly the ones that are hooked to houses, cause you'll see electrical cords going to the homes, and they, those are true hazards for people walking down those, the sidewalks. As far as the parking on the street with the RVs, you know, if nobody's living in them, you know, really ain't too much of an issue with the permits, it's when they're living in them, and they're, you know, they dumping their gray water, even black water out sometimes, causing, uh, trash issues, but for the safety as far as like going around corners in this city, it ain't just RVs. I mean, we got box trailers parked around everywhere too, but we're not charging these people permits, but these things are just as big as an RV. I mean, you drive around the city all the time, and you see multiples, box trailers per block, some of them real close to intersections and places where you're trying to make turns. Uh, down around, um, the Maple and D Street, I think it's the one, that, that, that turn right there is just horrible. You got trees, you got box trailers, you got big trucks that are always there, you just can't see nothing. All you can do is inch your way forward and hope nothing hits you. But, I mean, I, I just, I don't understand how we can sit there and say, we're gonna charge an RV, you know, a permit, to go out there, cause it's a large vehicle, get it out of the, out of their driveway or out of their storage, but you have a box trailer out there that's just as big, if not bigger, that you're not charging a permit for. That, I, I don't see how that makes any sense, because these vehicles are about the same size, you know? I, I know of people that have RVs been parked in streets for years, no one's ever said anything to them, cause they're not, uh, a hindrance. You know, they're not, they're not close enough to a corner to cause a safety issue, or nobody's living in it, nobody's dumping the trash out, but, you know, so where, I mean, where do we draw the line here? Are we talking about a size of a vehicle? Or are we specifically saying RVs only? I mean, like I said, cargo trailers, they're all over the place, whether it be a business, someone's using it for storage, what have you, and I've seen multiple places where there's car trailers parked. I mean, they had one car trailer parked up on, uh, east side of town, has a striped, uh, Defender on it, been there for years, sitting outside the street, you know, so it's a car trailer, it's a car hauler, it's been there. I remember multiple, multiple years just driving by and seeing that exact same trailer, exact same car, exact same spot. It's just as big as an RV. So, at what, where do we draw the line? Are we talking about just RVs? Are we talking about the size of the, of the vehicle? I mean, that, there's, there's some questions there that need to be answered, in my opinion, because, uh, safety-wise, some of these other types of trailers are just as dangerous as some of the other vehicles out there. Thank you.
Councilor Ridge. Let me close public comment. Anybody else have a comment?
Uh, there is a service in, uh...
Jerry, you have to come to the microphone.
Um, there is a service, New Beginnings, that, uh, has a parking lot in the center of Lompoc that they, I guess, pay for, and they, they try and get people off the streets into that area. I think it's, uh, you gotta be in by seven PM and out by seven AM, but, uh, I know that it's helped quite a few people, and they were mainly cars, not RVs, but I do agree, there's a lot of RVs just clogging our streets, and usually there's some problematic things happening at that location. Um, V Street or something, there's quite a few large RVs there, but, um, and I agree with the gentleman that, uh, there are other large vehicles blocking intersections, I mean, and if you're gonna permit one, did you, did you get to the point where if you did pay for a permit, um, you could have it, you don't have to do the move in seventy-two hours? Is that correct?
We're, we're not allowed to comment back to you.
What was that?
We're not allowed to comment back to you, with, this is not a two-way comment.
And that's the state law too, right? Yeah, right. Um, yeah, I'm just saying that there is, there are places that people could park and get them off the streets, and that's a great idea, but, uh, and then the gentleman mentioned, um, power in bathrooms and stuff, I don't think you're legally obligated to supply them with bathrooms and power, but it would be a way of helping. But this is the type of thing that's, I mean, this is the type of things plaguing major cities in California and throughout the nation right now. I mean, it used to be that, uh, digital nomad, someone went out and was a photographer, did stories, would, it was a glamorous life to be, you know, in a van or something, um, and now it's being criminalized to, to be, if you don't have a rent, if you don't have a home, where, where are you, you know? But, uh, there are people that have done that for years. I don't have an answer, but maybe we'd look at other cities and see how they handle it as well, cause Los Angeles has a huge problem. But I think you guys are doing a good job here, just little conflicts, you know, iron it out. Very nice town. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, City Council members. This, um, visibility issue is a really serious one, given that our traffic is increasing so much. On O Street, specifically, you couldn't barely get out in traffic during busy times, and schools starting, and, you know, the, the traffic for, for work, so I anticipate this only getting more difficult to deal with, if you guys don't take a progressive approach to safety involving the main thoroughfares through town. And again, a lot of our traffic issues are being caused, because we do not have our bridges over the San Ynose River bringing the commuter traffic from two forty-six into Central. It's causing all kinds of juggernauts everywhere, so, thank you.
Anybody else, public comment? Senator Misses Rice, we close public comment. Councilman Bridge.
Um, I'm, I'm not opposed to, uh, what Councilman Vega is stating, but it, it seems obvious to me, there is a significant amount of confusion out there as to what the rules are. Um, I think, I understand that the rules apply to every vehicle, they all have to move within seventy-two hours, but I think people in this meeting could walk away with a different impression. Obviously, the permit program has been very confusing to people. We just passed a couple new, uh, rules, um, one which outlined a part of the city that, um, we're going to restrict RVs completely, I believe, and, and another one has established this distance. So, I would like to suggest the staff come back with an integrated presentation as to what the heck all these rules are, how they work. We have a safe parking system, I believe. The young lady was talking about, well, we'd have a nice place. I believe we do, but obviously, many of us don't understand that, but, so before we make another rule, and perhaps that's what you're asking, is I'd kinda like an integrated presentation to come back and to include in that, what portion of this presentation would be put on our website, so when people have questions about parking in the city, they, we can say, go to page forty-three on the website, and you will be able to see all the rules, cause I'm thoroughly confused now, so, but, I'll, I'll wait and see.
Let me get something here, so, there was a comment made about safe parking for RVs, so I don't know if you're aware, and in, uh, February twenty-twenty-two, San Luis Obispo had a RV safe parking program, and an RV caught fire, and, and a, and a lady died in there, so, I mean, it, it, a lot of these RVs are, some of them out there, I don't wanna qualify all of them, but some of them out there are probably shouldn't even be on the road, and they're, and they are dangerous. And it's, it's, the difficulty is, you know, we do, we do have the RV park out there, and you're building a bunch more sites, so you'd be done with that, when are you gonna be for rent? The RV sites, when are they gonna be available?
Uh, we're looking at the, the December.
Okay, so there are a bunch of brand-new RV sites that will be available to rent, that people can park in, park their RVs. The complications happen with RVs versus box trucks is, there's hundreds of RVs that are stored in storage lots, and what happens is, there's not hundreds of box trucks in storage lots. People did, as Councilor Vega said, they, they thought, well, I can get a permit, now I can store it on the street. And it wasn't really drilled in and said, you know, you can, but you still, for seventy-two hours, you still gotta remove it. So, that, that complexity wasn't really pushed through, they thought, I could pay fifty-five bucks, and I got it for two years on the street, right? And what, what was happening is, people, other people were taking advantage of that, and they're doing that, and they're putting somebody in it, and somebody's living in it, cause you have to have this permit to be able to have it on the street after night, at, at nighttime. And you go, well, nobody's living in it, so you have a code enforcement officer that goes out, and yeah, nobody's answering the door, but nine, ten o'clock at night, the lights go on, and somebody's living in it. So, it is a little bit of a cat and mouse that we have going on, that we're trying to fix, and when you really look, that's what's out there, there's, there's a number of people taking advantage of this, and a number of people actually moved from down south, cause they came down really hard on the RVs, and we had a huge influx come in, and I'm not talking about the people who had theirs in a lot, and, you know, I understand, I had a neighbor, he brings it out of the storage lot, and he gets it ready to go on his vacation, and he needs the two or three days to get it ready, so he can take it on vacation. But again, I, I, I really do believe that, that streets are for, for parking and not for storage, they're for driving on, not for storage. And we go down that slippery slope of storage, then you're gonna have people go, well, what about my trailer? What about my car? What about my, my other truck? And the next thing you know, when you start discriminating on who's gonna be able to violate, as, as you heard the police chief said, the state law, and we're not, we can't supersede the state law on this, we can try, but if then you start getting preferential, and you say, okay, well, you can let this vehicle be here in front of their house for seventy-two hours, but you can't have a pickup and truck in front of yours. So, the slippery slope comes down there, if you start treating everybody differently. But they've done delicately to put this together, so that we can go after the people who are living on the streets in RVs. Is that, it's dangerous, we had one burned down in the wine gettum not too long ago. I don't think anybody got hurt, but I mean, what a heck of a mess. We've had several more in town that have been close to's on burning down, so, there's a lot of, we're trying to wrap around to figure this out, it's not just about somebody not understanding that we did something on an ordinance, but, I mean, there are solutions that are out there, we have RV coming through, I don't think that, safe parking doesn't do RVs that's in town, it does just cars, it doesn't do RVs. There was conversation about somebody setting one of those up, and again, one of the complexities with the RVs is they're dangerous, and RVs are made for camping, and they're not really made for sleeping and, and staying for, you know, for, and for a long period of time, they're built completely different than, than a home. And, Councilor Vega.
Uh, City Attorney, I, I guess the direction, just for council here, is I'm not advocating for permanent storage on the streets, what I wanted was some sort of separation from, as we know, the vehicle code says something about seventy-two hours, you know, with the state vehicle code, but we want something to separate it from the people that, we actually just created another one, another ordinance, or another exception to the ordinance, to get the people out that are not complying with the law. So, basically, what you did is, we created a parking district or something, and a hundred-and-fifty feet away, but that was meant for them, but to put the people in, in that same category, the RVs, with a permit, and that's where the issue that I'm coming from, is what's the separation, and why are we charging a permit just to leave it overnight, when there's no enforcement for the rest of it? So, basically, what we did, we had the city who said, hey, we're gonna fix this, we're gonna charge a permit. Why? Okay? Why? Okay? If you really wanted to, I will agree with, with the mayor, that it wasn't meant to be, uh, permanent storage, but the same token, there was a, the previous councils before, we had a previous mayor, they went to banning where the extreme was gonna be banned RVs from the street, and then we came into the size, which Santa Barbara did this, and they had somebody, something, anything over thirty feet, or something like that, there was some sort of a, an exception there, so, the separation is, what I'd like the city attorney to bring back to us, is without violating anything, as far as the state law or the vehicle code, are there any exceptions with the permit? I believe I mentioned the last time, and I said something to the city attorney, does, do, are there other areas that have a permit process for RVs, and I believe, unless I'm mistaken, that he said no, that we have a permit process, but Santa Maria doesn't, and other areas don't. So, basically, if we're gonna create something that's different, then we should model it the way we can explain it to people, so that we're not in the same category of people that are violating. We're talking about trailers that haven't moved in years, well, there's no one fixing that in a long time, you know? You can't just say, the trailers are there, and I, I understand, the ordinance is for the corners, for, for instance, one of the speakers said something on the corner of O and Maple and whatever those streets are, those are all very dangerous, anybody parking all the way to the corner for people turning, that has nothing to do with the RV ordinance, it could be an RV, but it could be a vehicle. You know, all those corners should be cleared, to be honest with you, they shouldn't be able to park all the way to the next, to the end of the street, you know? You know? But they do, and it's there, and it's all the time. So, basically, if, that's kind of what I'd like all the council, if we ask the city attorney to bring back, some of the options and exceptions here, with the permit process, to at least treat people that have the decency to come in and get a permit, what are we doing for it, for them? Okay? At all. Not to make permanent storage, give them some feeling that they're doing something right, and there's some sort of an exception to someone who's just, has a, a broke-down RV on the street that hasn't been moved in a long time. That's kinda maybe the mayor can model that up into a motion, or do I need to do that?
See if everybody's done, anybody, anybody get a question or comment, and you deliberate with that? Councilor, Councilor Ball?
So, I think these are all wise ideas, I'd love to hear maybe a comprehensive update from the city, I'd definitely love to hear from the police chief, a lot of this is gonna fall on implementation and enforcement, and what CSOs are gonna do or not. Thinking out loud, one of the issues, you know, box trailers or RVs, who's Thinking out loud, one of the issues, you know, box trailers or RVs, who's included or not? I have been in neighborhoods where, yes, they do park. It doesn't matter whether it's a car, an RV, or a trailer, they park right to the edge. And I feel for them, it's dense housing, there's not a lot of parking. But if that's one of the issues in terms of safety, you know, maybe the police chief can edify us, you know, what is our priority with the resources that we have? Do we want somebody to go chase every single trailer and box size and get their tape measure out? Or do we want to jump on, hey, let's make sure every single corner in our community has visibility? I mean, so that's another issue where we're kind of have to make priorities. So again, I defer to our staff and maybe the police chief on resources and what we can or can't do and how quickly. And, you know, you don't have an endless staff, but there's a lot of challenges out there.
I think sometimes we get into these conversations and we lose track of what the ordinances were intended to do in the first place. Seventy-eight families in the city of almost forty-five thousand people have received and paid for permits in our community. There's way more campers out there, right? And it was meant not to punish people who have RVs. It was meant to give them the benefit of having them close to their homes as long as they could prove that the RV belonged to them. So how many times have we driven down the outskirts of the city and have seen RVs that do not belong to residents parked on our streets? And we see gray water being poured out. We see the legal utility hookups. We see all those things. So from a police department standpoint, right? I look at it as the city is making an attempt to hold accountable people who are not residents of this community in the sense of owning a property. And I don't think less of anybody that decides to live like that, but they need to do it within the confines of the laws of the city of Longboke and the state of California. So I would encourage the council to remember that this was originally addressed because of the problematic issues we deal with on an ongoing basis. And you have the role of making those decisions when it comes to the municipal code. Our role is to enforce them. So I think sometimes, as I said in the beginning, we get a little off track and we start going down this road. And the focus wasn't to punish those residents that have RVs. It's really to address that other problem. And I think at times we do have some municipal codes that conflict. And that's what I think the city attorney is going to try and address that and make it work smoother and more applicable to the problems. And what I'd also like the council to remember is that when those people come to the counter to get their permits, they're explained that it does not bypass the seventy-two-hour parking law for the state of California, right? They're told that. And, you know, we'll take a look at our forms and if we have to make sure that it's in black and white and bold on the forms, maybe that's something we need to do. But they walk away hearing that it does not supersede California law. So those vehicles, if they do choose to keep them in front of their residents or close by their residents, they still have to be moved every seventy-two hours because we don't get to stop what the state says, so.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Vega?
You know, Chief, I'll just point it to you here because you're the guy that knows. You know, I think one of the issues here, I think, is enforcement. I guess staff should, as we've been hearing this for years, which is a true story. But I think the problem that comes here, when you have so many things that have happened, we're fighting against ordinances that says we can't do this. You guys know, you guys can't move these people, you can't do this, you can't do that. And hopefully, you know, with a little input from you guys that we can make the ordinance cleaner where it's easier for you guys to take some of the people that are violating these laws off the street. You know, I think we've been working on that, okay? So I think what happens is we're mixing it up. We get so convoluted in making ordinances and laws that are unenforceable or we don't have the staff. And then, I know you guys are up against, you know, a lot. But we have all these people that still haven't been cleaned up that have been violating this stuff for a long time. So we end up talking about the people that purchased a permit, who want to go camping, who want to leave. And I get it, the seventy-two-hour rule. But there has to be a little bit more benefit to the permit, otherwise take the permit away. You know what I mean? My thing is, don't charge a permit for something that they're supposed to be grateful for because they've been doing everything right when the people that are still there on L Street, that are still over there on V Street, are sitting there laughing and thinking it's okay. You know, that's kind of my point. You know, I live here, I've grown up here, and I think we're all getting a little frustrated. And I think that's why we're trying to adjust and make it easier for you guys. I'm not throwing the blame at you guys, I'm just saying it's been hard, you know?
Well, and I understand your point. I do also know that we got to put the responsibility for making decisions on what people are going to do with their personal property on the shoulders of those people that are doing it. And that's why we try to explain them to them the best we can. Here's what you're looking at and this is what's going to happen. Council has passed this ordinance. You still have to abide by California law, so you're still going to have to move the vehicle every seventy-two hours. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. And, you know, we do have safe parking in the community. We've made attempts to give people a safe place to go if they're living out of vehicles, both RV and smaller vehicles as well. So again, council's decision, I just want to let you know that in most cases, everybody knows when they get those permits, what they're getting.
Thank you, sir. And I appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing, but it's almost, you know, when you're driving down the street and you look at L Street, you look at V Street, you look at somebody, it's almost embarrassing, you know, to see that our streets can look like that, you know? And it's awful, you know, that we're sitting here having this conversation. And we have people advocating for removing the people that are paying for the permit and trying to make them, okay, you got to get off the street too. I get it, but something needs to be cleaned up on one end or the other before people point their fingers. But thank you.
I just want to say one final thing. And I want to point the community and the council back to you, last year's annual report. So that, I don't want the public misled that we've only been towing RVs because we have it. So the vehicles that we towed last year are in, twenty-twenty-four, were three-hundred-and-thirty-seven vehicles. Those weren't all RVs. Those were also those dangerous cars on jacks, things that just needed to be removed, expired registration issues, things like that. So it isn't just a focus on RV parking. It's us doing what the law allows us to do in the community every day.
I believe you even got more this year, right? I believe you even towed more this year.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. It's just, there was such a plethora of them that showed up during COVID and stuff that they're cleaning up, got a lot of cleanup they're doing, so.
And we don't tow right off the bat. That's what I want the public to understand as well. We give people warnings. And if people don't heed those warnings, then we have the law that we will use to do what we need to do. And in most cases, all these people are given ample opportunities to relocate and remove their vehicle from the street. It isn't tow right off the bat, so.
I think, I understand with it, police chief has advised us on the seventy-two-hour being state law superseding. I mean, if you see something different on that. But I think definitely the hundred-foot marker in this ordinance probably needs to be adjusted. I don't think there was anything else in there. On the municipal code ten-twenty-eight-two-forty, it complicates it when it has the hundred-foot limiter in it? Do you think that's something that you can bring us back with, recommendation?
Yeah, definitely.
Did you see anything else in there? I think you heard some discussion up here. If you, maybe if you see something that goes along that lines?
I'm good. I'm good. As long as the council gives a consensus to have them bring it back so we can adjust it, make it a little bit more fair or have some clarity here, you know?
And likewise, aligning with what the chief has just mentioned as well. He's, he could, you guys work together anyways.
Well, the law is the law, so I'm okay with the law.
I'll make that motion to make it.
I've had my light on now for about ten minutes.
Sorry about that. Go ahead, go. I'm sorry. Usually, usually don't wait for your light anyways. I mean, go ahead.
I really just wanted to clarify, I was not criticizing any of the previous ordinances. What I was saying is, and I've just heard it again, there's a lot of confusion about what all the ordinances are, how they relate and where they go. And I think we should get that picture put together before we go do another piecemeal. Oh, go fix this little piece or I want that piece fixed. I think we should have a comprehensive picture of what all these ordinances are, including the state, that there's seventy-two hours. And I dare say there's a rule or a law that says you can't park within a hundred feet of a corner. So, you know, they've already got a rule about that. We don't need another rule saying, don't park a big truck on the corner. But, so I'll plead the ignorance that I don't know what you did in twenty-twenty-two. But we seem to have a lot of confusion, not only with me, but obviously with the people that stood up and talked. So I would love to see just some kind of integrated presentation come back personally.
All right, let me go ahead and make a motion, maybe the, along with an integrated presentation, clean up work together with the chief and stuff to, if there's things that you think could make it better or compliant, because we just passed this other hundred-and-fifty-foot limiter ordinance and make that work. Okay? I know it's a little vague, but.
Well, if I could, let me just try to summarize what the motion, what I'm hearing from the council, what you would like to be brought back. What I'm hearing from Councilmember Vega is that he would like to, he would like staff to look into whether we can exempt RVs that have permits from the seventy-two-hour parking ordinance. And what I'm hearing from the mayor is that he would like us to look into extending the hundred, the hundred-foot on either side of your house rule. If you have an RV parking permit, you can park within a hundred feet of either side of your house. Making that larger in order to allow people that have RV parking permits to comply with the seventy-two-hour parking rule by being able to move their RV more than a hundred-and-fifty feet. Because you have to move your car more than a hundred-and-fifty feet in order to comply with the seventy-two-hour rule. And then Councilmember Bridge is requesting a comprehensive presentation on what I'll call the various RV issues within the city. We can bring all those things back in order that staff feels is an appropriate order to bring them back.
I would just like to add, let's include vehicles. You know, the seventy-two-hour rule probably applies to all vehicles.
It does apply to all vehicles, yes.
As you're going through this list of what people can do and can't do, let's include box trucks and vehicles.
So include in the comprehensive presentation, maybe information about what the rules are for parking box trucks, oversized vehicles and our.
Yeah. Just vehicles.
Well, I mean, that gets pretty broad if we're going to talk about all parking rules for all vehicles. But if that's what you'd like us to bring back, then we can.
Okay, well, I'm not trying to create more work than it's worth, but I know that the chief has already said the state law applies to all vehicles.
There's no permits for that.
So it seems like we should at least acknowledge that.
Mr. Mayor, got a question here for you, okay?
Yes, Councilmember Vega.
And for the city attorney. As we're bringing up this hundred-and-fifty-foot rule, I guess what I'm asking for is for us to see what the separation is with a permit or not a permit, since we don't have another precedence to go by. But we have the hundred-and-fifty-foot rule here that we were making for the other RVs, right? For moving, for the people in violation. You know, I don't know that I advocate for the hundred-and-fifty-foot rule for people that are legally permitted for the RVs. I think they probably stay within the hundred foot, you know? I'm not sure if we can make that exception because you hate to infringe on somebody else because somebody puts their trailer in front of you, your house, even though you're permitted. I always thought the hundred feet would be like, maybe it was across the street or something, you know what I mean? So I'm not sure if I'm going in that right direction, you know? I'm sure you probably wouldn't like it if somebody put their RV in front of your house even though they're on the same block. Because a hundred-and-fifty feet is a long ways, you know? I'm talking about for the people with the permit. But I'm not sure if that just convolutes everything, Jeff, you know? Because previously it was a hundred feet. But the people in violation for the parking, so I'm not sure if we can separate it that way or not, or if that just makes it hard.
The reason why I modified the hundred-foot because of this ordinance versus the ordinance we had the second reading on tonight, we went to a hundred-and-fifty, you have to move a hundred-and-fifty.
No, I understand that.
Okay. Well, that's why, because of the new ordinance.
I know what we passed the last time. What I'm saying, we're talking about the permit process. If there's a difference, you know, if you guys don't want to change, that's fine.
There's a motion out there that I think somewhat connected between a combination of all three. Maybe once the second in, we vote on it and. Okay, we get a motion by Mosby, second by Bridge, but. And that passes five-zero. Okay. Written communications?
No, nothing.
Okay. Brings us back to item number, number ten, the John Smithville Restrooms.
Good evening, Mayor. Council?
So real quick, because we, I think it really got me is the amount of the change order that we got hit with. This is forty-five percent of the total project. And what would happen if we said no? And we decided not to spend ninety thousand dollars in a change order with this being presented to us now? To the attorney? You want it, your light's on?
Sure. If the council did not approve this, then the contractor would not get paid for the work that was done under the change orders.
And I guess the reason why I ask this is, and I know things take time to get through, but what date was this done? What was the date that you guys decided to do this project and spend more money? What, May-ish? Was it May, June?
Yeah, this project was, all the change orders were May, June, and then July.
And I guess my concern is that if somebody's seeing that we need something happening and granted, we're in budget time or whatever, I think it's important that this gets brought before the council as soon as you can. That, and I get it, that this is one of the reasons why I made the request during the budget cycle that we reduce the authority of the city manager down to a hundred thousand and it was going up to two-hundred-and-forty thousand. Because this allows the people's money to be spent, I don't want to say blindly, but I mean, this is a big change order, this is forty-five percent of the contract. And that's kind of my concern with this in.
Yeah, and if I may, that was an overlook on my part as well since the contract did not come to city council. But there was appropriations already approved through CDBG before the project. And so there was some change orders that were necessary. There's about twenty-eight thousand in there that was foresawed and temp fencing. Then that was overlooked in the RFP. So there's probably about thirty percent that was over. But it was due to a lot of electrical and relocations of the irrigation panels inside the unit. We elected not to put the muskle lighting on the outside in a cage. So we wanted to keep it clean. So we had to relocate some items inside the mechanical room, which changed the formation of the water electricals. So we had to move a lot of stuff around in there to get that done. But that was the reason that there was appropriations.
So one of the other things this does is, so when you go through a bid process and people are bidding, well, with this guy's change order, he probably, maybe he wasn't the lowest bidder. Now with the change order. And maybe the other guy wouldn't have all these change orders because he would have said, hey, I knew I had to do that. I knew I had to move the electrical from here to there. And just, we can set a dangerous precedence with this. And just, we can set a dangerous precedence with this. And I mean, I saw it up here on a Caltrans project. $4 million all of a sudden, more the guy said. And these are significant money. And then I think we don't want to go down the slippery slope of being the pushover for change orders. I get it, things change. But when somebody bids a project, you bid the project. And if this guy didn't do his due diligence, not saying he did or he didn't, I'm just... $90,000 and a 45% increase in a project's a lot of money. So, Councilmember Bridge, sorry, there's your light.
Pay attention.
I would have to wait once. Is this project done now?
Yes, it's complete.
So you say that $90,000 is getting forwarded. Where does it get forwarded to?
We have an outstanding invoice from the contractor that then we need to pay. So that these, this approval by council will allow us to, to complete the project with the contractor.
So you're saying that the... I'm, I'm trying to understand the numbers. So it was approved for $285,000?
I believe it was 195 was the initial RFP. And with the change orders, it's about 285.
Well, it says here the project was funded for $285,000. What, did we fund it, or didn't we fund it for the 285?
Yes, it was, it was appropriated through the CDBG money, which had over the 300,000 for that. So the initial 195 was contracted with the general contractor. But the change orders, which is for you today, I approved those with the understanding that the, that money was there through CDBG. And, and it did not come back to council at that time, which it should have.
So what is the total now?
I believe it's 89.
285, yeah.
285 total. And you guys are approving tonight that 89 and change for the change orders.
So will the total now be 285, or 285 plus 89?
No, 285 total.
So coincidentally, the project was RFP'd at 194, and change orders brought it to exactly what was appropriated?
Available. Well, there was more than that available. In the staff report, it's just saying what we need to be, to be funded. So the 195 was, was done on the contract, and the rest is through CDBG money that's already approved for park projects.
Okay, I'll try one more time, just for, because I'm slow tonight. How much was put on the budget for this project?
There was over $300,000 in...
Over $300,000.
In the CDBG. And then when we went out to bid, it was 195 change. And now with the change order...
It's at 285.
And now with the change orders, it's at 285.
So where does the money go that's left over?
It's still in our CDBG accounts for future park projects.
Future, so it's going to transfer the next bunch of projects?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ball? So, yeah, again, I, I agree with part of what I'm hearing. I do think that there should be, you know, we have to be cautious. And I, again, things definitely happen. But it's important for us to, to maybe be involved when there's, you know, it goes over 50%. It's not just a few bucks over, it's a pretty big overrun. But again, I think there's good questions on the RFP process, make sure that we're being fair. Somebody gets in super cheap and then they run up the bill on the backend, that's not necessarily great either. But at least in this case, if I'm to understand it, the money is already allocated, it's already paid for, CDBG is taking care of it. So at least in this regard, it's, they're not asking us to go and dip into the GF or allocate extra funds or anything. It's already, it's already taken care of, correct?
Yes.
So in that regard, I'm fine with it as is. But I do agree that we should have a tighter process and make sure that, you know, accidentally, the price doesn't go up 50% or 100% on some projects that we thought we were getting a good deal on.
Yeah, just to ensure the council, I mean, we, we scrutinize all change orders and we're out there with the contractors, talking and, talking and negotiating that, that this, does this need to happen or not? So we just don't give out change orders, so we do look at everything.
If I could, just speak to the fact that this happened kind of in that transition period between the higher threshold and the $100,000 threshold. So I believe that the, the Parks Department was acting upon the understanding at the time that it was 220, I believe it was, threshold. And, and, and then when it came time for those invoices to be paid, we were at $100,000. And it was our job as accounts payable and purchasing to say, "Well, this has to go to council before we can pay this."
Well, I, I don't really, at least I can speak for myself. As Councilmember Ball said, things happen. And typically, RFPs will have 10% or 15% management graciousness, or whatever they call it.
Contingency.
Thank you, contingency. But I think the heartburn I'm hearing is not that things happen. It was really the size in comparison to the project was worrisome. And I think that's why you're seeing us pick at it, more than that threshold, that magic number. So I just wanted to say that.
It, it was just one of the very, the several variables.
I want to also give you guys teeth to, as well, that if contractors think that we're going to be pushovers, they were not going to be pushovers. Not saying that this wasn't everything, it's just, when you go through a bid process, maybe the next guy who was the second one would have taken care of this, made the contingency. So there's, there's a lot of, you know, 17,000 for sod, you had $2,200 for a ditch they dug. I mean, there's a lot of, just saying, all right?
Yeah.
So any public comment on this one?
No, because we took public comment against it.
Okay, very good. No public comment. I'll motion to approve. So Mosby Ball motion, go ahead and vote. Thank you, go ahead and vote. There we go. That passes 5-0. And thank you, Mario, I appreciate, I know it's a, you're new at the director's seat and everything like that, but... Sharpen your teeth on him, okay? All right. And bring us to the next item is the... Number 11. This is a contract purchase order for $473,000 for seven electric F-150s. You're in the hot seat, all right.
Hi there. I've been briefed, I know a lot about this. I don't know everything about it. I may tag in our, our Public Works Director if necessary. So, got some questions, I hope I have answers.
Okay, are, are we allowed to lease these vehicles instead of buying them?
I could start with the question I didn't know. You know, I honestly don't know that, the answer to that. If we can lease them in order to be able to be compliant with CARB, I would have, I would have to ask that question.
And I guess that's my other question, because I understand that a lot of this is this green energy mandate for us to get these, you have to buy 50% of these green vehicles so that we can buy, which is kind of extorting us and forcing us. And where I'm concerned is a RICO violation by racketeering by the people who own all the Chinese battery manufacturers to force us to buy something that... How many charging stations do we have currently at the corporate yard?
We have two.
Right. So we're going to buy seven vehicles and we can't even charge them?
Well, we do believe that they, we have a plan in place for how we can rotate the charging of those. And they aren't high-volume or high-mileage vehicles in the city. So...
They're fast, though.
They should be able to hold the, a charge, and we should be able to rotate those between the two charger, charging stations. The issue really comes down to that we are not in compliance at this point. And in order for us to be able to even put in for exemptions, we have to get into compliance. And so in analysis of how we can most efficiently and less, and with the least cost impact, get into compliance, this was the solution. These are our seven...
Are we, are we out of compliance because we bought the electrical, big electric trucks and all those vehicles, and we didn't buy any electric, battery-powered vehicles? Is that what got us out of compliance?
No, we are out of compliance because we need to have half of the vehi, of the vehicles that were purchased in the past year. We're, we're over 8,500, and this is where I...
8,500 pounds?
8,500, yeah, the, it, and we have only purchased one that fault, that complies with that. And we, we had thought that the, the regular Lightnings would comply, and then we found out that it has to be the...
It wasn't heavy enough.
Right, it was, by, by, I think it was 100 pounds, which...
Maybe a little more. That's why you get the big super battery and everything else you do to these, yeah, I get you.
And these are, they are more expensive than the, buying the regular F-150s, the internal combustion engines. But they are not anywhere close to as much more expensive as what the violation fine would be. And so we do...
What's our timeframe to comply?
Well, right now, we are holding off on purchasing any internal combustion engines until we are in compliance, because for every one of those that we purchase, it increases the number that we have to buy that are electric.
Can we buy those other, or can we lease the other vehicles?
Again...
You don't know that.
We could theoretically lease the non, the non-electric or internal combustion. I don't believe that would count towards our, but I would have to verify that.
So I've got a couple of questions. One is, can we lease if we can, lease if it's a way that we can, not skirt this, but have a lease to own, five-year or 10-year, you buy out at the end or something like that. But it, it might, it might be an avenue, because I've asked a couple of other people the question, they didn't have the answer to that one. But likewise as well, what I, I did talk to some of our local vendors and said, "Well, how come you guys aren't bidding on this?" And they said, "Good question. How come we're not being allowed to bid on these?"
Well, what we, we use the Sourcewell contract for it to be able to move quickly.
I know, it makes it easier for staff, I know.
Well, it is, it is partly because we are trying to get into compliance as quickly as we can so that we can begin to purchase the internal combustion engines and, or vehicles, and also then qualify to be able to apply for exemptions.
How long would it take to put these out to bid to local vendors? Do you have a short bid process?
We do have a, a process for putting out vehicles to bid. It, with the, with the holidays coming up, I, I would expect that it would take, I'm guessing, three, three to five weeks combined with the whole process.
The reason why I suggest that is we tell our people to shop local, and then we done. And I get, I get it that we have the mandate with the electrical, but I really would think that we could put this out. If we could save, I mean, these are, what, about $70,000 a vehicle? And if we could save $10,000 a vehicle, that's $70,000 we save for the people. But if we, you know, that's why we have the bid process out there. And I, I understand the Sourcewell makes it quick and easy.
Sourcewell is a compet, has gone, is a process where the competitive bid process has occurred, and we are then using one of those competitively bid contracts. So it, it is still a competitively bid process, it's just not specific to local.
So do we, we just, we need a vehicle, does that have to be the Ford F-150?
That is the only vehicle that has been identified by our fleet department to be able to qualify for this particular, the qualifications, without it taking us to a whole nother level of class.
What is, what is the weight of the Chevy's vehicle? They have a battery-powered vehicle. With the extended battery and everything on it, do you know what its weight is?
I, I don't know what its weight is, but I do know that they looked at the Chevys and that they were not, they were not going to be able to meet the needs. I, I don't know if that was because of the, the weight, or if it was because of some other parameter of the vehicle that was not going to be acceptable. But that was a question that I specifically asked of our, our fleet manager, was, is there any other vehicle?
And I guess, again, it's kind of more of a precedence component that I'm looking at, kind of like the previous issues. Like, if I had a sheet on here and it said everything what it was, and it had the weight of the vehicle and the price of the vehicle and why we're doing what we're doing, other than we're just going for Sourcewell, hey, I get it, this is on consent calendar. It's only $473,000. But I, I still think we should be investigating a little deeper. And I do understand it's easy to go to Source, easier to go to Sourcewell. But I'm just, I wouldn't be doing my due diligence if I weren't, no pun intended, kicking the tires on these things.
I, I think that when, when we look at whether we're going to go out to a, a bid process or use Sourcewell as the mechanism of the bid process, we are taking time into consideration, but also staff capacity. And when we have an option like Sourcewell and we can move forward with that, it allows our staff to continue working on all the other bids that are on their desk. And if something like this, we, if we use our resources for this, it just means that we have to shuffle. And it was a decision that was made in looking at the whole picture.
All right, just, AI just told me the Silverado EV is 8,600, 8,900 pounds. So I don't know what...
I, I don't know what the, I don't know the technicalities of that. I can ask that, and we could come back with this.
Can we bring this back for next meeting with, with more report on that to answer the questions I have? City Manager?
Yeah.
We can do that.
I, I motion that we table this one to the next meeting with questions. Councilmember Ball, I'm sorry.
Can I, before we table, can I ask you a couple of questions, since they're going to bring it back? Again, I, just a couple of quick comments on this. I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but you see all the numbers all the time, so see. What you come up with, on an annual basis for our fleet now, I know it's complicated, many different departments and so forth. But in general, how much do we swipe our credit card every year to pay for gas? It's a big number.
I don't know that number off the top of my head. It is, it's...
So, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, we can come back.
And I could go back to my computer.
Maybe next time you come back, that's something, me as a, just being curious, as a city, how much do we spend on gasoline? Just as a number, I'd love to have that.
We're going out to bid for a fuel, fuel contract here shortly. I, I, I can easily say it's over $1 million. I don't know specifically the amount. I remember that we came to council a couple of years ago that we had to ask for, I think it was an additional $700,000, just to get us through the rest of the year.
So again, look, there's no environmental argument here. We could argue about mandates from the state and all of those different things. Sometimes we have to do what we have to do. But I was sitting in the seat, as you mentioned, when, you know, gas prices, they kind of ebb and flow, and they happened to be pretty high at the time. And we, as a council, had to vote to augment or, you know, supplement more funds to, to pay for that gasoline. So again, it is expensive, electric vehicles aren't necessarily the cheapest. But a couple of things that we have going for us is, we do have our own electric department, so we have that resource right there for us. In addition to that, the studies have been showing, I mean, they've been doing testing on battery-operated vehicles. They have 10 years' worth of data now, almost 12, 15 years. And they've been showing that maintenance on battery-powered vehicles tends to be a lot less over the time of the vehicle's lifespan than gasoline, just because there's a lot less moving parts. You can argue about that, but maybe go look that up. My whole point is that we shouldn't just be against something that's forced upon us unless we can say, "Look, this is actually a good deal for us, because this is how much it's going to cost the city to charge these trucks per kilowatt hour. This is why it's a good deal for this." And I do agree with some of the questions from council. Is it a better deal for us in some context to lease or to ask about leasing options? Any of those things that might make sense. But for me, the future is definitely electric. Gasoline's going to be here for a while, obviously, but I, I'm definitely pushing for that in terms of the charging. Again, you don't have to keep the truck plugged in the whole time. They do keep it ready to charge 300, 400 miles, and I'm not sure we're driving that far every single day. So again, for me personally, when you do come back with this information, I'd love for you to educate me. How much do we as a city have we been spending on gasoline? for you to educate me, how much do we as a city have we been spending on gasoline for our fleet for how long? This might be an interesting piece of the conversation long term. Thank you.
And how much electricity we buy too?
Right.
For ourselves in general. I believe, I have got a plug in hybrid, my friend, so I understand, but I don't, nobody put a gun to my head and told me I had to buy it. That's the thing I don't like. I appreciate, let the flow and let the curve move as the curve needs to go. The mandate is, wait till we have to buy our electric trash trucks, that was not gonna be too much fun. So anyhow, if we could, anybody else have any other questions? If you just bring this back.
May I ask?
Yes.
Some specific direction on what additional information you would like to see if we bring this back?
Councilor Ball's got some, I'd like to see if there are other vehicles that would meet this and see what the ability we can do to maybe put this out to bid or see what these other vehicles might cost or whether it's even feasible to go out there and even look at it. Doesn't necessarily have to be the Lightning, Chevy has one, and there are other vehicles that are out there that might work. I saw the, was that in Nevada somewhere, they got eight new ones Tesla trucks for their police force, given to them. Maybe these guys out here, Elon could give us some free trucks, I don't know, who knows? What's that? At lease, yes. The ability to lease is leasing away, if you need other trucks and vehicles were being stalled for whatever reason, are there alternatives with the lease option to buy things or something? Yes?
Again, don't, I hope you guys don't blow off this little thing about gasoline. We are gonna be mandated by the state to do a lot of change in terms of our fleet procurement over the next decade. It's just gonna happen. So this is a great case study for us to understand, okay, what does it cost? How much does it cost per year? How much does it cost to turn it on and to drive it? So I am very curious about gas versus electricity.
I would love to get into those numbers and I will dive into that. I think that in this specific one, we didn't go as deep as we could have because we knew that there was a mandate that we're not in compliance and that we needed to move. And we are in the middle of audit and we honestly, I would love to go into every, dive deep into the numbers, I am so in the weeds right now, it's crazy.
All right, so there's my motion I made, added in, piggybacked. Got it? Good? Okay, there it is. Most people on motion, go ahead and vote. And that passes 5-0. I think one of the other variables that comes to play, Councilor Ball, is electric vehicles, the 10-year resale, the 20-year resale, you know, those things really nose dive, but yeah. All right, moving on. Last two minutes, all communications. Anybody, two minutes, use your time.
Hi, a couple of things come to mind. I would really love for the City of Lompoc to perhaps request there be a slight reduction in the number of seismic activity events that are occurring every 48 to 72 hours with our military air force base with those launch activities, because those are seismic in nature and do impact a lot of the local people. Not everyone is like all for it. Also, it'd be great if you guys somehow consider bringing in some kind of high powered leaf blower ordinance, because having those devices used just nilly willy all over, you know, when they're abused and blowing sediments and debris and street dust and smashed up broken glass and silica and grab loose sediments like that, it's just very unhealthy for our air quality and we're already impacted by, you know, agriculture and pesticides and diatomaceous, you know, earth to some extent. So that'd be great if you guys can think something up on that. And a couple of things that concern me about what you guys just were discussing, you're gonna table that number 11 and bring it back, is forcing our employees to ride in electric vehicles because of the radiation given off by those lithium batteries. Also, they do spontaneously combust and when they do ignite and catch on fire, that's gonna really affect our fire departments because they have a lot of trouble getting those vehicles put out. And yeah, just a couple of things like that, just, and also if they start running their heater and it's cold season, that's gonna run down the battery, so there really won't be that much charge, you know, once they charge it up, it'll be less distance it covers. Thank you.
Anybody else? See, nobody else rise, we'll close. All communications, bring out the council comments and meeting reports. Councilor Ball.
A couple of different things I was gonna mention, but I'm just gonna leave it to the, just this one, I think it's super important and I know we're all aware of it. There's a lot of people right now that are dealing with uncertainty. There's a lot of people that are not getting their paycheck and aren't quite sure when that's gonna arrive. There's a lot of people that are on food assistance that are dealing with uncertainty. It's a real issue. Santa Barbara County deals with some of the highest rates of poverty in the whole state here, so there's gonna be a lot of impact. So regardless of politics, people do need to eat, families, kids need to be fed and be healthy. So for those of you that are so inclined, keep the food pantry in the back of your mind, keep it on your radar. For those of you that know where it's at, consider going dropping off some food. If you don't know where it's at, the Lompoc Library's got a spot where they'll collect the food and take it over for you. So just remember your friends and neighbors, this is the holiday season coming around, Thanksgiving's around the corner. A lot of people are dealing with some stuff that they don't necessarily have to deal with every year. So just keep, keep everyone, keep your neighbors in your heart and try to help them out if you can.
Councilor Starbuck?
No reports.
Councilor Vega?
No reports.
Councilmember Bridge?
Yeah, I had a couple of things. I wanted to give a shout out to ASO, they're just finishing up the soccer team. They, they're an amazing organization, they had thousands of people out in the park and Mario and all your staff supported that. It's something for the community to be proud of. In the upcoming agenda items, item two on the list, I've kind of been waiting for it to come up, but I'd like to get it scheduled for perhaps the second meeting in January. It is the discussion of review of the Lompoc Municipal Code, including the public gathering permit process. I'm not sure what that's about, but it looks like it's been on here for four years or three years or something. But I've had several municipal code that I've just been collecting that I think we could change. For example, I don't think the cars or the trucks we just said were gonna, I can drive legally on our streets, because they have a 6,500 pound limitation in our municipal code. So I'd like an opportunity to get changes that I've been collecting in the municipal code and if I could get council concurrence out in the end of January. Dirk, Jim? Okay, I got three.
Do you? Look at this, City Manager. Did he give you enough direction? City Attorney, you get enough direction?
What? I believe so. What I got direction to bring back is an item so that the council can inform staff on some proposed changes that must be made to the municipal code that they'd like to have made.
Okay.
That's true.
Okay. Councilor Starbuck with a head nod? I'll give him a head nod, who else want?
Ball.
Ball?
I just wanna, it was item two on the list, so if there was something else buried in item two, bring that back at the same time so we can kill it.
And item two was also including public gathering permit process.
I don't know if it's really one that can be killed, because like it says it's ongoing and that was a request, just on an ongoing basis, look for outdated or inappropriate things that are in the municipal code that are no longer needed and bring back from time to time cleanup items. So that's what you're, that's what you're proposing to do.
There he goes.
All right. That's the way that's done, I'll go for it. Thank you.
All righty. I've got, I don't know if I need to take it down to with a request, but I just, somebody, you ready? Yeah, all right. This is on an individual, Santa Maria County Animal Care Foundation, they have something, I passed that on with you, do we need to make a request that for you to look for a place? It's for microchip scanning station for people's animals or pets, they can go in.
We've been passing that around and researching that, we'll get back to you.
Okay, I'm just sure if you wanted me to, something, something, okay. All righty, with that, we'll, we get, no more lights on, then make sure there's vision. We will adjourn to November 18th at 6:30.